All this meeting of the Arundel Planning Board to order. It is seven oh four P M. We are in the town meeting room in the town hall. And I'll take a roll call, starting at the far end.
Michael Neto.
Scott Carter.
Jamie Lowry.
Paul Green. Rich Genong, I'm the chairman. And we have on the agenda tonight. We have approval of the of the agenda, approval of the minutes for October seventh, two thousand twenty five. We have public comment. We have a public hearing for Branch Brook Fuels. We have pending business Branch Brook Fuels conditionally used revision. Under new business, we have Weers Motors Sales, a site plan revision. And for other business, we we need to discuss the dates of the meetings in November.
I'll make a motion. We approve the agenda as listed or.
Second.
Motion by Paul Green, seconded by Jamie Lowry to approve the. The agenda as read. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It is unanimous. Moving on to the approval of the minutes for October seventh, two thousand and twenty five. I need a motion from somebody.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Michael Neto, who who made the the second? Okay. Seconded by Scott. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous.
One abstention.
And one abstention. Thank you, Jamie. Public comment. This is that time in the meeting where if you have nothing that is in front of the board, if you're here because of something that we're going to discuss, public comment doesn't apply. It's for for the residents of the town to come in and say, hey, we'd like you to look at this. We'd like you to look at that. What do you want us to take care of? We we need to hear. Since nobody's jumping up and down and trying to get to the mic, I'll assume that there is nothing for public comment. And we will move on to the public hearing. It is seven oh six. I'll call the public. I'll open the public hearing for Branch Brook Fuels conditionally used revision, a proposed revision to add a thirty thousand gallon propane storage tank at the existing fuel storage and distribution location. All required state permits have been obtained by the applicant. The parcel is located at fourteen Sawmill Lane on Tax Map thirty six lot fifteen in the D B two zone. The property owner is D N R Leasing Company Incorporated. The applicant is John Hughes. Does anyone from the public have anything that they would like to ask Mr. Hughes about? Seeing the great response we have. It is now seven oh five, and I will close the public hearing. And we will move on to board discussion. We had. We had a site walk this evening. We saw where the the site is being proposed, where the tank's gonna go, how it's gonna be all connected up. We had no questions at the meeting. So if there's anybody from the board that has questions about what is going on with this, now is the time to ask.
I have none. I think the place looks fantastic. As I have none, I think the place looks fantastic.
Jamie?
One question, just curiosity. On the plan, it looks like the bollards stop about right before you get to the rounded part of the tank. Just curious why? All the way around. That's what I was. That's what I would have expected. Yeah, so. It's the new tank. You just got a fence. You've got the fence there.
There's also.
So that's the plan prior to the revision.
Oh, okay.
It was been great. There was some concerns brought up about not showing the fence. So as we looked at it, you know, it goes, that's bounces out to here and then all the way around. It's just that was completely encircled.
Cool. Yep. Thank you.
Any other? Any other questions from the board? If there are no other questions, I will accept a motion to approve, and we'll go through the findings of fact.
I'll make a motion. We approve the application.
Second.
Motion by Paul Green, seconded by Jamie Lowry for approval of the application. Findings of fact and conclusions of law, conditional use and site plan application Branch Brook Fuels fourteen Old Sawmill Lane. The background Branch Brook Fuels Incorporated submitted condition to use and site plan applications to install a thirty thousand gallon liquid propane storage tank to the existing propane storage facility at fourteen Old Sawmill Lane. Today, the the site consists of one L P storage tank, four twenty thousand number two fuel tanks, oil storage tanks in recessed containment, a fuel tank with steel containment and a shed. The property also contains a building. The majority of the property is paved and the remainder is filled with gravel. The parcel is located in the downtown Business Two District on Tax Map thirty six lot fifteen. The proposed use of fuel storage and distribution operations is a conditional use in the D B two district. The applica- this application is subject to the general performance standards, section five site plan review standards, section ten, and zoning standards specific to the D B two district, section six point five. At the October seventh, two thousand twenty five planning board meeting, the planning board voted to find the application complete. The board scheduled a site walk on a on at six P M. On October twenty first, two thousand twenty five, and a public hearing at seven P M. On October twenty first, two thousand twenty five. Since the October seventh meeting, the applicant has provided an updated site plan showing existing and proposed site conditions, including landmarking, parking areas, proposed signs, proposed emergency shut off, and the proposed chain link fence. Findings of fact and conclusions of law, application is the applicant is Branch Brook Fuels Incorporated. The owner is D N R Leasing Incorporated. The location is fourteen Old Sawmill Road. Zoning is downtown Business Two, D B two district. The existing land use is fuel storage distribution and the proposed land use is fuel storage distribution. Ten point six point four site plan criteria for approval. Item number one, the proposed project conforms to all standards of the zoning district and meets or exceeds performance standing specified in sections five, nine, and ten of this ordinance. Findings, the proposed project conforms to all applicable standards of the Arundel zoning ordinance, specifically the general performance standard in section five and the zoning standard specific to the D B two district, section six point five. These will require separate motions.
Making a motion, we move to accept.
Second.
Motion by Paul Green, seconded by Jamie Lowry to to accept ten point six point four point one. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It is unanimous. Number two, the proposed project will has received all applicable federal and state permits. The applicant has provided proof of all state permits and provided a complete overview of the inspections and requirements required by the state of Maine. There remain additional reviews after municipal approval, including regular inspections.
Make a motion to accept. Second.
Motion by Scott, seconded by Michael to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Number three, the proposed project does not unreasonably impact public safety and fire protection and will not create a financial burden for the town of Arundel in the provision of emergency services and law enforcement to the project site and the neighborhood. The applicant received review from the Arundel Fire Department. The fire chief has no additional needs, as noted in his letter dated August twenty eighth, two thousand twenty five.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Paul, seconded by Jamie. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Item number three is unanimous. Item number four, the proposed project will not have an adverse impact upon the quality of surface or groundwater resources. The proposed development is not anticipated to impact the quality of surface or groundwater resources.
Motion to accept. Second.
Motion by Scott, seconded by Michael. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Item number five, the project provides adequate stormwater management facilities to produce no additional peak runoff from the site during twenty five year storm event and will not have an undue impact on municipal stormwater facilities or downstream properties. The proposed development is not anticipated to increase peak runoff from the site.
Didn't approve. Second.
Motion by Jamie, seconded by Scott, was it?
Yep.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Number five is approved. Number six, the proposed project will not have an adverse onsite and offsite impact upon existing vehicular and pedestrian circulation systems within the community or neighborhood. Findings, the proposed development will not have an adverse onsite or offsite impact to vehicular and pedestrian circulation systems.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Paul, seconded by Jamie. Any discussion? Hearing none. It is unanimous. Number seven. Oh, yeah, we should vote on that, but I know it will. All all those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Number seven, the proposed project will not have an adverse impact upon environmental quality, critical wildlife habitats, marine resources, important cultural resources, or visual quality of the neighborhood, surrounding environments, or the community. Finding the proposed development will not have an adverse impact upon environmental quality, critical wildlife habitats, marine resources, important cultural resources, or visual quality of the neighborhood, surrounding environments, or the community.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Paul, seconded by Scott for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It is unanimous. Number eight, proposed project will not produce noise, odors, dust, debris, glare, solar obstructions, or other nuisances that will adversely impact the quality of life of surrounding parcels. Findings, the proposed development will not produce anything that will adversely impact the quality of life of surrounding parcels.
Motion to accept. Second.
Motion by Scott, seconded by Jamie. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. Number nine, the proposed project will not have a negative fiscal impact on municipal government. The findings, the proposed project will not have a negative fiscal impact on municipal government. Yeah, go ahead.
Second.
Motion by Jamie, seconded by, was that Scott or Michael? Scott? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Number nine is unanimous. Number ten, the use is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the anticipated future development of the neighborhood. Findings, the proposed application is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Second.
Motion by Jamie, seconded by Michael. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Number ten is approved. Staff recommendation, based on the above findings of fact and conclusions of law, staff recommend the Arundel Planning Board approve the conditional use and site plan application of Branch Brook Fuels as herein presented. On the basis of the application plans, reports, the above findings of fact and conclusions of law, the Arundel Planning Board approves the proposed conditional use and site plan application of Branch Brook Fuels at fourteen Old Sawmill Lane with the following condition of approval. Prior to the issuance of building permits, the applicant shall submit a fully executed performance assurance and irrevocable letter of credit pursuant to sections ten point seven point one and ten point seven point two to the planning board. Motion by who made the who made?
I did, and you seconded.
Okay. The planning board voted to approve on. We voted. One, two. Yeah, we have to vote on the whole thing.
We gotta vote on.
Okay. Given that, given that we have, we've we already have the motion.
Yeah.
Yeah. We've already done it. All those in favor of the approval?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It is unanimous. So we've we've got one, two, five, nothing.
Yep. Got it.
On October twenty first, we'll get that signed. We'll get the plan signed.
Um, just one note on the condition, the performance guarantee. That's just the town likes that to be for every single project. For this project, it's not a it's not necessary. There's no public improvements. So I don't think it's necessary to add that to the signed plan. I'm happy to remove it from the findings when I send them, but it's just the the town just likes to have it for every project. Right. So that's why it's there. It's not needed for this.
Well, it's it's something that you and John would work out between you in terms of what what was going to be there or not. It's my understanding that the project is completely paid for. Right.
My approval on on draft. He's trying to get a chat. He's got his butt over here and keep going, so. Yeah, that's that's what I'm gonna do. I'll present a paid bill for the whole project.
You want a second copy of this? I can use mine.
Yeah.
I got it. I got it somewhere. Go find it.
Okay.
Okay. You use your old phone.
It'll take a couple of minutes. Deal with all of this. You'll be good to go.
Thank you.
These two guys won't give rich. Where is?
Same thing. John. Yeah. Yeah.
Are they good to go?
I think we gotta get your signature on one of them.
Yeah.
We use Jamie's. I think one of those. Where's your signature this one? Yeah. We're gonna. It was very tiny. Thank you. Well, don't leave me. You don't leave the door. No, I don't think so.
All right. Okay. Thank you very much, John.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, John.
Next item. Weas Motors Sales Site Plan Revision, a proposal to erect a forty four by three hundred and fifty foot solar canopy. This is a revision to the size and location of a previously approved solar canopy that the planning board approved on four two, two thousand twenty four, but was not constructed. The parcel is located at fifteen thirteen Portland Road on Tax Map thirty three lot two in the D B one, D B two zone. Paul Gadboy P E is the applicant's agent, and Bruce Mador is representing Weers Motors.
So is is this Bruce? That's John.
That's Joe.
You did hear that Ben passed away.
I I did. If it was Bruce, I was gonna offer my condolences. I heard it this afternoon.
I hear this. That's John with with revision energy.
Okay. So so we're gonna have to persuade the town hall. We need to close for a day of memorial.
I'm sorry.
Ben's done so much for this town.
Yeah, he's a good guy.
Okay.
Richard, like you said, we're proposing change the shape. It's gonna be the same size as a square footage wise.
Yeah, it it just extended it.
And I believe they did that because it'll fit, make the maneuverability of the site a lot better than. It can't be this direction. I'm driving through the center of the canopy. This kind of pushed the canopy in the southern direction. So again, it won't go right straight through the canopy, especially tractor trailer trucks, which was designed to handle, but I believe that's why they came up with this new design. I can't be for sure.
Yeah.
I think it's a better site, better location for the project. Um, so it's pretty much exactly the same as the last one, only it's same square footage, so it's existing pavement. Um, except it's different shape and size. Size, different shape, same size. You know, Sam brought up some questions in her review. We did have a lighting plan completed for this project when we did the additions. I do have copies of that. I kind of just blew it up. So it shows that it's not moving five foot canid or less than one foot canid spray area. I can certainly give that out. What I did is I I blew it up so that you could read the numbers. It actually came from a lighting plan that was done by Jay and M Lighting out of Canibunk, I believe. So by canid, it was ten last. But I blew up a section that was important. I'll be driving to visit with Sam once, or later. It's totally a word they wanna see.
Is there any lighting? Proposed change?
Actually, there's existing lights under the building right now.
What?
Those are all great.
Instead of a child, just put them up on.
They're just gonna be mounted. I'm afraid I'm gonna be a change, but same number, same position essentially, and obviously, as they're with the canid, they'll produce less.
You can email me your copy. That'd be good.
Yeah, reading that. They said there was no change. There's none of the lighting or any of that stuff, so.
I have a question. Maybe this is just a nuance I'm missing, but how is this not considered a building?
I'm sorry.
Uh, the memo, the proposed structure is not considered a building. I guess I don't understand how this is not considered a building. It doesn't need architectural design standards.
Sam, can you answer that?
Yeah, so the use itself of the a solar canopy, solar canopies aren't allowed anywhere in the town, so it falls under an accessory structure. So it's essentially like a solar carport rather than like a building with like windows and other features that would require like architectural design. But I guess it's accessory to the to the use on the property, which is like motor vehicle sales.
I guess my question is, we have a definition of the word is for building. Any structure having to be supported by column walls.
This this has no walls.
Has no wall.
Yeah. Supported by columns or walls.
But it also says for the shelter of persons, animals, or personal property.
It's the personal property.
But it's not a shelter for it. It's it's a man who used a garage for the cars. This is my take.
I'm looking at this. This is essentially, this is a revision to the original plan. And and you've just elongated.
Oh, pretty much what we just went through.
Pretty, pretty much. But the the issue becomes whether or not we need to have a public hearing on this. And given that it's a prior approval, I don't know the answer to that question. So I'm gonna defer.
Yeah, the difference was he was adding on, okay. So you're right. You changed to the site. This is basically just you're switching it, putting it side by each instead of.
And and.
Instead of a square.
I I and I I agree, but we've we've had the discussion with with someone else, some other applicant about whether it's a revision or an amendment. Do we need to change anything? I'm I'm honestly, I'm looking at this going, no, we don't need to have a unless Sam can give me a reason as a town planner as to why we would have a public hearing. I'm not sure that it's necessary.
It's it's really up to the board. Um, usually amendments to plans can just go through in one meeting. But I know in the past, there have been other site plan amendments that I've gone to public hearings, so it's a matter of it's up to the board. It's good to be consistent, but it's totally okay, I would say, to not do a public hearing since this already was approved as a just a different size.
Right. And and that's one of the things that, you know, we we will have to discuss that as as a board as to whether or not if we look at this, this is a de minimis change. It's it's it's.
You know, coming back and you're saying, okay, we didn't get to the first one, but now we're gonna build two or we're gonna build three. That's a whole different ballgame.
That's a completely different.
Talking about, I'm gonna take it this wide. I'm gonna take half of it and put it behind it because it makes better sense for traffic and safety. I I don't see the need for it.
And I think last public hea- last one, there was nobody showed up for public hearing. So I mean, if you have a site that really, you know,
It's it's.
A site that you wanna make sure you dry your eyes, brush your teeth.
And I think if we, if if the proposed, what was originally proposed and approved was a more of a square farther from Route one, and it was starting to encroach towards Route one, then it may be justified where this is, you know, most of the or the expansion area is away from one. Right. It's not. It's not getting closer to, you know, material purely closer to a budding property or anything like that. It's all within their nature. I mean, personally, I don't know if we have a provision for a maintenance change, but if we did, this would be the one that would qualify that wouldn't even come in the planning board, so.
Yeah, we 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 don't. So it it does become our decision.
That we forego a public hearing on this.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Jamie and a seconded by Paul Green to forego having a public hearing. Is there any discussion on that? All those, yep, Michael?
I'm just cautioned, but I do feel like it's a little bit of a slippery slope. I think, you know, there's talk about like, what if there was a waiver being requested, or if there was impeachment on X, Y, and Z.
I think at that point, we as a board decide whether we think we need it or not.
Okay, on a case by case basis.
That's kinda.
Yeah. Point of water. I think we have to deem the application complete first. Right? Before you have a motion for a public hearing.
Before we have a motion to have a public hearing.
Right.
You know.
I'm just asking.
You know, it's a good point.
Good. So I'll move. I'll move. We deem the application complete.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Paul Green, seconded by Scott to deem the application complete. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The application is complete. Now we'll go back to the other motion made by Jamie and seconded by Paul to forego having the public hearing. Is there any discussion on that? Now personally, I'm in favor of foregoing the public hearing. It's just.
Mike, were you done with?
No, yeah, that's fine. Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I'm all about keeping it minimal. I just, I do just, I just wanted to just mention the slippery slope part of it. That's all.
Yeah.
If the board does not have a public hearing, the next meeting would still be the voting meeting on the findings. Cause it's.
Yes. We, we'd have to vote on the approval and, and sign the paperwork. The next meeting is November 18th.
And could we vote, could we move it? So that if they need any documentation to start moving forward, they could each show and then we would have the findings of fact loaded on and, and approved and signed at the next meeting. I don't know if that's any benefit.
I don't know.
Do you all?
How, how are you at the November 18th? What's the timeline?
So, so we have to have this all seen because utility interconnection. So put, put the, that would be very challenging.
Okay. Yeah, I, I see no reason that we can't. We have done that in the past.
Right.
Uh, do you have the plans themselves ready? Okay. If, if you.
I can bring them.
Drop them off to Ann.
Okay, yep.
We can sign them. We can, we can go through the rest of it and make.
Of course. I'm afraid.
Yeah.
I just do print and call.
We can go through and, and, and do the, the, the findings of fact because I, no, we can't. We don't have them, do we, Sam?
No.
Okay. But we can, we can at least, we can make the, make the motion to go through the process so that you will be able to, to proceed forward and not be held up. Cause we're held up on the fact that we're not meeting on November 1st, our November 4th, which is our normal date. And we can't meet on the 11th because the town hall is closed. So we're looking at the 18th. You're looking at almost four weeks before we.
Yeah. And we get to the fourth.
Election Day. And they're in this room.
Oh. What's on the 11th?
Veterans Day.
And the, and we, we definitively said we work and have a meeting like on an off day that we is that, was that, was that official?
Coming up. It's coming up in other.
That's, yeah, that's, that's coming up at the end of.
Sorry, Sam.
We definitely have any other business coming up. Um, all right. So so did, I don't remember. Did you call the vote on the public hearing?
On the, on the public hearing? Yes, we did.
Okay. All right. So that was five. Nothing. Thank you. Obviously no paperwork.
Uh, and now we, we, we.
Is this a conditional use? Or just from a site plan?
This I believe is just a site plan.
We don't have to go through the whole findings of fact and vote each one of them.
No. Because we haven't, nothing has changed since the original site plan, other than the extension. So no, I don't think we need to go through all of that. You know, if he had put it, if he had put a sign up on top of it, yes, we'd end up going through that whole thing because then, then it would become more of a, less of a diminutism change. This is just.
So maybe it'll be a a benefit to at least have a vote in an, you know, email documentation or a letter from Ann saying that, you know, we took this action. Then I would say we, we both should have the, at least approve the plan so they can move forward. And then we can get the findings back up. Just so moved.
Sorry, I meant, I mentioned, mentioned this. Are we foregoing landscaping and buffering? There's a mention of that. There's not something depicted.
They're, they're not making any changes to anything from what was approved, other than extending the, the panel.
Okay.
Well, I move we approve the amended site plan.
Second. Motion by Jamie, seconded by Scott to approve the amended site plan. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It is unanimous. Congratulations.
Okay. So I'll bring Ann the plan tomorrow.
Yep.
Just that one sheet. I mean, there's two, I just want to sign.
Well, we'll have to go through and do the findings of fact.
We will, but, uh, Sam will be able to pull them together for us.
Yeah. We'll have to.
On the, yeah, on the, on the, at the next meeting on the 18th.
When you guys are aside at another meeting, like before the 18th?
Yeah, unless.
Yeah, we might, we might.
We have to make, right. In order to make it official, Paul, and get it on record, we've got to still go through.
Yes.
The finding of facts, sign two copies of that, sign two copies of your plan. So.
Right. But we.
It is approved.
We can get, we can get, uh, Ann to write up a letter stating for expediencies purpose, you know, yes, you, it, it has been authorized. We'll just get the findings of fact printed out.
Thank you, gentlemen. Oh, this is the first time I don't see Marty.
I know it. I was thinking that tonight because we had a sidewalk and I'm at the sidewalk looking for Marty. Where is he?
Marty passed away. Yeah.
He did a couple of weeks ago.
I know. I didn't know.
Yeah. It, it was a shock.
It's not like the newspaper anymore. You know what I mean? So, you know, I mean.
Yeah, there's, there's some kind of a service or something.
I ran for it later to me.
Yeah. Sure. I thought maybe just finally, who I was on the board for like thirty years. I don't know.
Uh, he's, I think he, I think he, he was on the original planning board way back in the day.
I think so.
At Town Corporation.
Right?
Okay. Town Corporation.
Yeah.
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 Yep. Oh, I'm sorry to hear that. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Bernard. Appreciate it.
You're quite welcome. Thanks, guys. Okay. Next item, other business. Before we do other business, we do have we have, well, we have to discuss uh, when we're gonna have a meeting. But I've been asked to make sure that everybody understands that if you are not going to be here, we need to know about it. Because, so that we can we won't, uh, so that our quorum requirement would be met. And more than anything, we're required to have four people here to have a meeting. If we're, if we're going to the sidewalk, we're required to have three people.
And just so you know, just so I'm aware, is the standard, if you don't respond to the group email saying, I'm not going to be there, you're assumed to be there?
I want you to respond either way.
Okay. Good to know.
Either way, you're coming or you're not coming.
Okay.
Because if, if we don't hear from you and you're not coming, if there's only three people in this meeting, we can't have a meeting. And the applicant is stuck between a rock and a hard place.
Okay.
So yeah, just as long as people respond, I'm, I'm. Hopefully Ann will set, will send out. She has sent out requests in the past. Uh, as, but even when she sends out a request, not everybody has responded. Uh, so we just need to make sure that we cover that. And then the question becomes November 4th is Election Day, November 11th is Veterans Day, and the office is closed. Uh, according to Ann, we need to determine if we need to have two meetings in November based upon the submissions, or if we only need to meet once on November 18th.
You know, what we got.
We have, right now we have nothing. We're not.
But we know we gotta finish this.
We're, yeah, we're gonna have this that, that needs to get finished. Okay? But that could be done on November 18th.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and.
Is there anything coming down the pike that we are aware of? Like?
No.
There's nothing on that's come through right now.
But they have up until two weeks, right? To technically submit?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a two week timeline. So.
Right.
But there could be something, but I haven't heard anything. And the only thing that's still kind of in circulation is Kate's butter. We haven't heard anything from them. But there's nothing new in the pipeline right now.
So there's nothing right now. So automatically we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have a need for a meeting on the 4th.
Correct.
Right?
Right. Well, no, we would have because then Paul would have come back.
We got Paul's stuff to do, but it can based on what we just did, it could happen on the 18th and it wouldn't.
They're gonna get everything they need.
Yeah, they're, they're.
A letter.
They're gonna have everything.
Yeah.
So that can go to the 18th.
Yeah, it's a, yeah, we took away the urgency there.
Well, I, uh, I'll move we, uh, forego the November 4th meeting and have our next meeting on the 18th.
Second.
Okay. That's, that's already been taken care of. I told Ann we were gonna meet on November 18th.
Okay.
What are we gonna do? Meet on the 25th? The day before Thanksgiving?
No, it's always a second and fourth, right?
Yeah, if we have anything pressed, I don't see why we would wanna schedule a meeting on the third or the fifth. Just.
Uh, the third, the third would create an issue. That's a Monday, the selectmen meet. Right?
There's nothing in the law or that says there must be two meetings a month?
No.
For that.
We, we get, we have had times when we would have one meeting in November and one meeting in December.
Yep.
Gotcha. Okay.
A lot of other planning boards only meet once a month.
Oh.
Especially from, for projects. At points, so.
Okay.
I don't know if that means we're busier than most of them or not.
Well, I mean, a lot of them.
Yeah.
Yeah. In less populated places. There's no, nothing statutory.
Do we need to vote on that?
No.
Okay.
So one meeting, November, November 18th?
November 18th.
Correct.
Okay. Um, we've still got a couple of open items too that I can draft up. We still got the industrial park thing. That we can put on that agenda.
Yep.
And then, uh, at the last meeting, we talked about there really isn't a good guideline for amendments.
More, yeah, more for amending the, the, uh.
Approved plan when they come in.
Yeah.
Something like that. Cause they've got two fees, but we only have.
So we should, and, and unfortunately we can't, we can't dictate the fee on that.
No, not talking about the fees, but if there is, if they have a fee for one, then we probably ought to have instructions for it. Right?
Do they have a fee for it? Did the selectmen?
That's what he said. Who was it? John said there was one fee for an amendment and one fee for, one fee for revision and one fee for, uh.
Right. One was $700 and one is $200.
Right, yeah. You're right. Yeah.
So.
So let's, let's discuss that.
I'll draft, I'll go through and see what I can find on it and I can bring it to the next meeting.
It's, it shouldn't be overly difficult to come up with something because it's, it's not gonna go into effect anything. It's just gonna be a line statement in the ordinance related to submissions.
And I'm sure other panels do this, that we've been probably caught in pace. So largely extent, right? I mean, other, other panels must have a process for that that we don't, right?
Yeah, that's why I'll go, I'll go do some search and see what I can back and we can look at it.
Charles was saying that, that the towns that he, that he's dealt with like Portland and South Portland have something in there.
Yeah.
I asked him to send it to me, but he hasn't gotten it, gotten it out yet. Cause if, if it's, if it's only, you know, 10 or 12 words that we stick into the ordinance, it won't take effect until the town meeting a year from now.
Right. But at least we can have.
But we'll, we'll have it set to go.
Well, and we can even address in there, at, you know, put some words in there at the discretion of sidewalks and public hearings and all that. We can clarify all that. Sam, if you do have something you wanna send it, I'd appreciate it.
Happy to send something. It, it honestly, for amended plans, it can be simple. I think along the lines of that, there needs to be something in there regarding like minor changes to approved plans, which don't need to go to the planning board.
Okay.
Um, which there's currently nothing in the ordinance and we reviewed a few of those. But it, I can send you what I, uh, what I have in some of the other communities that we've worked in.
Okay. Yeah. If you send that to me, please, I'll put something together for us to look at it to me.
Yeah. I think it should only relate to stuff that we would normally see. Um, cause there is, there is a site plan committee. And they do meet. But for something like this, it would have been very easy to, to say we don't have, we can do, if we had known, he could, he could have gotten all of the stuff together the same way John did. And we'd be able to get right through it.
Well, even John had a couple, a couple of times because it was confusing to him. He's the one that brought it to light. So.
Yep.
Sure.
If there's nothing else.
Motion to adjourn.
We're done.